Welcome to our February 13 Tiburon School Committee meeting. Open forum. Sue Cordoza has provided us with a framework or a grid of some data that I believe she wishes to address.
Sure. I just wanted to thank the administration and the school committee for—
I want to get right into the mic.
Oh, sure. I just want to thank the administration for the support of halftime additional remedial reading teacher in the proposed budget. And I just wanted to share with the school committee just some data from the last seven or eight years and how things have changed at Picasset. So, the need for that teacher would be an integral piece in meeting and servicing the needs of the kids that we have at the school. So, if you have the table in front of you, it just shows you a little bit about how in 2010, we had a part-time reading recovery teacher at Picasset, whereas I was also a full-time teacher there. So, that helped with early intervention of students, which in turn ends up decreasing the number of students who need intervention later on at the older grades. And then that teacher retired, and for a period of time, I was servicing all the children that needed remedial reading support. So, over the last couple of years, we've just seen an increase in children who need support, both those children who have—they have services provided by a special education teacher, but also children who are receiving supports by the classroom teacher. But we have kind of a higher priority of need with children who don't currently receive any support. So, we're focusing on those kids.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, just to remind you, because these are not posted items, we don't have an opportunity to respond unless we take it up in a separate meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to take up item 5A1 as a separate item.
Second.
I'll make the motion. Second. All those in favor? Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Ririck. Sorry. Yep.
We needed to table 5A2 because it's misprinted.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
You guys were quicker than I—
As a separate motion, I'll entertain a motion to table item 5A2.
I'll make that motion.
Right. It's—the wrong one.
So, we have to remove it. Really have to remove that item because it's not the correct item.
To remove it. Okay. To remove it.
Okay. Second.
All those in favor?
So, it's going right?
Yes. And we need a separate approval again for the consent agenda, I believe. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
And second.
All those in favor? Mr. Ririck.
Opposed.
Opposed to?
The consent agenda. The motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Correspondence. The committee received a request from the Tiburon Administrators Association notifying the committee they are—would like to enter into negotiations, contract negotiations, because their contract expires in a few months. The second correspondence is a letter from Jack Reed regarding a piece of legislation that he'll be submitting called the School Buildings Improvement Act, which would provide $100 billion to schools across the country for improvements to the facilities.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve item 5A1. Would anyone like to make that motion?
That's part—5A1 is part of the consent agenda.
Yeah.
No, we took that off as a separate item.
Yeah. Okay. It's 5A2.
So, what is—Dr. Rocken, can you tell me what 5A1 says?
So, 5A1 is resignation of a custodian at Tiburon Medical School.
Oh, yeah. That's the one I wanted off.
Right. So, we took that up as a separate—
So, we could vote it separately.
As a separate item.
Good.
And 5A2 was removed.
Okay. So, 5A1 is the resignation of the custodian.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So, we're going to vote on that separately.
So, now, we need to make a motion to accept the resignation.
Okay.
So, I need a motion to accept the resignation.
So moved.
Is there a second? I guess I will make the second. It's extraordinary to not accept a resignation. So, all those in favor? The motion fails. I don't actually know what the significance of that is, actually.
I'm just abstaining.
If we don't—you're abstaining. No, but we don't have a majority vote.
I know.
All those opposed? Ms. Pavel, you're neither—
I'm abstaining. I'm sorry.
You're abstaining?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have two abstentions and two in favor of accepting the resignation. So, I don't know that we have a legal remedy to compel the custodian to continue employment if he has resigned. So, I guess we're in limbo with that.
I can bring it back for—I believe I can bring it back under Roberts' rules for another—
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 7, Policy Development Revision and Review. Revised Field Trip Policy Number 1262. First reading.
Yes. The committee has before—it's from the policy subcommittee, a revised field trip policy that we're asking actually to change the name to out-of-school field trips. And you can see the proposed changes are underlined with the new language and the old or current language with the strike-throughs.
Any discussion?
Just for—the so the committee understands, we received input from our school nurses. It's also been to our attorneys to make sure that it's appropriate and—
So, this is the first reading. So, really, just a matter of input discussion. Any questions or discussion?
And thank the policy committee for working on that.
And I do want to also thank the school nurses who took part in the development and the updates to the policy. I think—
So, we had a number of meetings that they attended.
Right.
Thank you.
I don't have any particular comments, Mrs. Pavel.
No, I don't.
Okay. So, that is our first reading. So, item 8A, Revised 2018-2019 Budget. Mr. Ririck?
Yes. In your packet—or let me back up a little bit. At our last meeting, we reviewed the proposed recommendations from the Finance Subcommittee, which totaled $225,800. And we'll get it up here in a second for everybody. These are the items that we talked about at the last meeting. And everyone can see what these items were. Go to the next page. Totalling $225,800. We also talked about replacing the high school gymnasium, the divider in the high school gym, dividers at the high school and those classrooms that you see listed, as well as six water fountains, for an additional cost of $56,300. And what we did was we put it through, and you have this document, but you also have the four-page summary. We took those items for the purposes of discussion and put them into the format that we're used to following. And I put—I put this one up here for public consumption because it's a summary of all the line items that we have in our budget. And you can see that with those items added to the budget, it would bring us to $799,502 above where we were last year, a 2.7 percent increase. Our initial budget submission back in January was for $30,466,960, or an increase of $573,702. The Finance Subcommittee met within the week ago, and we went through our budgets from previous years. And we believe—and it's the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee—that we believe, based on our state aid that we have coming in, in addition to looking at our trends, what we spend each year, we believe we can take care of the entire increase, either through state aid or through our fund balance and/or if we have a surplus at the end of the year, we believe we can cover these increases. And it's the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that we ask for a dollar more from the Budget Committee.
But, excuse me, Mr. Ririck. That looks like a dollar more because of state aid.
That's correct. But what—but on—the right. But on the local—the local appropriation—
Mrs. Black, your mic's not on.
The local appropriation from the town would go up a dollar. Right.
But when you look at this chart, you'll see at the bottom—not last year, the year before—we asked for $1 also. We didn't ask for an increase. But it'll say an increase on the chart because of the state aid that we get. Nothing from the town. Last year, again, nothing from the town. This chart says state aid. So, everybody has to know that even though that increase is so small, from the town side, it's even smaller, which we're very happy to do because we want to—we're one town. We always say that, 02878. And last night, and you mentioned the word fund balance, and we have the people here tonight for the roofs and boilers and everything. So, I just—I have the picture here. Thank you for the Newport Daily News. They take pictures of the people doing the job of what the people voted for. You know, they're up on the roof, they're doing the boilers. And when I—I get a call last night that someone at the meeting said—and their name is on the rock outside, because in 2002, they were on the building committee, and they totally supported everything we were doing. And last night, they said, "This bond that we just had was a bailout for the school department." That's totally unacceptable. Dr. Rocken was there. He said the same thing last night. So, just to get this clear, the school department has worked with the town. When I go to the Budget Committee meetings and I hear the fire chief say, "We need air packs, 10 of them, because their life is over. They won't fill them anymore because they'll explode." And then they say, "We might not have the money." I say, "This is unacceptable. We have to come together as a town and work for the priests, fire DPW, the kids, from the crater to the grave, as they say, if you really care about everyone." And that's what we have done all these years. And I'm getting sick of it. I'm getting sick of people saying that we—you know, we take all the money. These schools belong to the town. They're a town asset. So, let's all get together and work on this this year. Fine citizens here, we're going to court, Superior Court, for what we did last year trying to do our budget. That's ridiculous. So, let's all get together and work on this. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Black.
And I think what Mrs. Black's obviously very germane to where we are as a town. But it is an important point to note that we got a dollar more last year as well. The increase in the numbers isn't state aid revenue. The Finance Subcommittee is comfortable making that recommendation of the dollar more on the local side. We believe we can sustain the increase. Based on the numbers that we just went over, we're comfortable with the $225,800 in additional spending that we talked about. The Finance Subcommittee—and I know Mrs. Polish couldn't make it tonight, but Ms. Farnworth was there, and she could probably speak to it as well—was that we're not so sure about going above that number because everything that we take out, we always run the risk that we're going to have to use the fund balance to pay for and possibly create a structural deficit. So, in order to go beyond that quarter of a million that we were—have before you, we're not so confident in going above that number.
We did spend a significant amount of time going through all of this, and we are in full support of the list of the items that we're recommending, and that we feel that because of the fund balance that we are carrying and because of the anticipated increase in state aid, that we are comfortable this year with only asking for the dollar more from our town. It really is in the spirit of cooperation, knowing that, you know, we have other departments in the town that are struggling to get basic needs met and that we—you know, we need to understand as well that we can manage what we have for this year. There's nothing to say that—we don't know what the future will bring.
No.
But for this year, we're comfortable with allowing this budget to stay in this.
Thank you for that, so committee, for all our hard work. And I totally agree, you know, that that's what we should do for this year. I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay.
Just—I'm sorry. And Dr. Rocken, it's up to you. We have sent revised documents on the fund balance. As you know, we just yesterday around noon time received the final copy of the town audit. It's—the numbers are slightly higher than what we originally saw. If you want, we have those—we're ready to walk everybody through it so we can explain how much money the school committee actually has. We have a line item coming up in the budget—I'm sorry, on the agenda regarding ceiling tiles and lights. And I think it's pretty—it's very germane to understand what the fund balance is before the committee considers that request.
Yeah. So, just to clarify a couple of points first, though. So, we can or cannot take a vote on the recommended budget at this point. We have until—what's the drop dead date? Where we have to—
Much 14th.
It's 14th. Yeah. So, we've still got time. But I don't know if we should defer that until Mrs. Polish is able to attend.
Yeah. That would be good for all of us here.
Mrs. Pavel, did you have any other concerns or questions or—
I wasn't—I wasn't asking for—you know, on the budget number. I'm talking about the—just a clarification on the fund balance.
Right. Yep. No, I understand that as well.
Are we going through the fund balance?
Yes. That's what I—
Well, that's what we're contemplating doing next, trying to kind of actually run the meeting a little bit. But anyway. So, Mrs. Black, anything else? Mrs. Pavel, anything else?
No, I guess not.
I didn't do this before we went through that. You set it up?
I just have one question. Is this going to be available on the website?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
Yeah. I'll just make one comment about—so, for members of the audience, the draft audit was, I think, given to the town sometime late last week. We got it yesterday. I got it late yesterday afternoon. So, we're still digesting some of that. I think sort of one of the things that we always have to keep in mind and did come up last night was that our special education needs are a very difficult thing to get our arms around each year on an ongoing basis. And I think probably the only really truthful—or not really truthful—the most accurate thing, I think, that we could—that was said last night was, special education moves around a lot, and it is very difficult to understand what our needs are going to be going forward or even what our needs will be, what the result of our budgeting and out-of-district tuition and particular costs will be. So, that's driving a lot of these numbers.
So, for those of us who weren't in attendance, can you kind of give me a little bit of a—
A what?
Of what went on last night?
Oh, basically, it was just—
I know there was a town council meeting. I remember. I still remember the docket.
We weren't. And it was actually open forum. So, it wasn't a posted item per se. But it was basically just the auditors went through with the council where things were. And the audit was—there was nothing, you know, wrong with the audit. It was just information that was getting presented relatively—it was relatively new and fresh to everyone.
And when will we receive the audit?
So, we have received—
We received it yesterday around noon time.
Yeah. So, it is a draft audit. We probably—
He didn't—
No, but you have—no.
Jerry has a copy and Bill—
I received a copy from the—and the Central Office has. It is something we will typically take up at our next meeting. But it was not posted. It is relevant to the budget. And so, in that sense, it is a posted item. But consideration of the audit itself, which is still technically in draft form, although they were quite confident that the numbers were not going to change. And it was also a somewhat different audit in that the—I forget what the acronym was, but basically, it was a sort of forensic type of audit, looking at it from different sort of perspectives. And so, it was a higher level, I think, of discernment of different numbers than the towns were used—the town was used to. And it's a project that they—they sort of went with about 13 to 15 towns last year were in this second group of towns. And next year, the entire state is going to be in this program.
Transparency thing. Transparency Audit Calendar. Is that what they call it?
Yeah. Do you remember what the acronym was? It was—
Transparency Portal is what we're part of. We're the second group of towns.
Yeah.
And it's more—it's part of the reclassification issues that we already saw with our numbers, with lines that didn't exist last year but now exist, and money gets moved around. So, we're—the Tiburon is in that second wave of communities that are going through that new process.
Would it make sense to ask the treasurer to speak with us about this audit at our next meeting?
I think—I think historically, we can walk ourselves through it.
Yeah.
The document itself, as people don't realize, it's 156 pages.
I realize that.
And our page that fascinates people is one page that—page 92—
What I would recommend we do is now go to the fund balance. Maybe Ms. Far can walk us through that. And that we take up the audit at our next meeting. And if there are questions still at that point, then we could engage the auditor themselves or Ms. Saret or whoever else we think might be able to—
It wouldn't be the treasurer's community. It might be the auditor that you'd bring in.
Dr. Rocken, could I just say one more thing?
Yep.
Thank you. So, we both paid for the audit, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. So, what I think should have happened is that the school committee and the town council should have been presented the audit at the same time with the auditor, and we should have been invited because it's not fair that people are calling me on Saturday, asking me about the fund balance, and I don't have it because I don't have an audit. So, I think next year, we'll have to straighten that out and all be there together. It's—it belongs to all of us, and that's why I didn't go last night because I don't show up at places where I don't have the answers.
And it's also important to know that this isn't a new phenomenon. This has been going on for at least 10 or 12 years. We've expressed—various previous school committees have expressed that it be handled differently. Even though we pay for, I believe, half of the audit, it always goes to the town first. We're always playing catch-up like we were yesterday. We always find out through a third or fourth party.
You know, that it's ready and it's coming.
And we're not paying the bill until it's finalized, and we know it's finalized. But what Mrs. Black is referencing is a practice, unfortunately, that's been going on for a number of years.
The first year I sat there as the liaison to the council, and we had a deficit. I had no idea. I was sitting there. I was like, "Oh, my God." You know, it was like, you're not supposed to have a deficit. So, luckily, we've come a long way from there, but still, we should all be involved in sitting there together.
Well, certainly, it's difficult to answer to information that you're kind of getting presented right then and there. And that is certainly something we can take up with the council.
That's what happened to you last night. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So, anyway, Ms. Far?
My light is working. All right. Great. So, I passed out adjusted fund balance that you have received now. We'll just walk off of that one. I did modify the one that was the original one, like you requested, Dr. Rocken, that Doug had done. But at that point, it's now kind of dated.
The one—just for the sake of clarification, you have two that look exactly alike. The page we're looking at, right below the boxes, says 4.4 million, 4.429. Did you give these out?
Yes.
You should have this.
She gave me two to sweep that calendar.
Oh, all right.
She didn't give us a second. This is the new one.
Here. Take mine.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So, the top part, what says committed, that was the 1.6 million that was already discussed earlier and voted on by the committee. The next area is the restricted. And the 4.4 million, as Bill was just saying, was the new data we got as of yesterday. We then subtract out the committed balance, which is from above, which gives us to 2.7 million. Other items, potentially funded for the fund balance, which we have discussed in previous meetings, from the litigation, personnel commitments, and high school parking lot for 451,000. The next section is proposed with FY '19 budget or request. The two items there, the ride reimbursable eligible and the non-operating budget technology was already discussed. The new item on this one is the Finance Subcommittee recommendations, and Bill had just gone through that a little bit earlier.
And I'm sorry, and that number is—this is just a working document. It's the assumption if the committee approved the budget, this is where it would come from and what it would look like. So, it's just a working document.
Variations of items that we would imagine or estimate coming in and out of the fund balance. The next part is the add-back completed committed fund balance items. This comes from the top part, which is the grid area. It's for 250,000, 250,000 for the different FY '15 and '16 funds. Also, in your packet that you had received, there's a ride capital request one and a ride capital request two. Up above, it's in the 460,000 and the 110,000. Some items actually got taken care of already. So, we're adding back that those dollars to say that we have it available.
And on that 803,000 for the—again, if the committee—we're showing this to the committee to say that that 807—that 803,700 was—and still is because the school committee has to vote to take it out of what's called the committed lines, this 1.6 million. But we're saying that the—this is real—this is money that's not assigned. In other words, originally, it was. We put it away. This 803,000 is available to the committee if it chooses to use it. If it votes to say, "Take it out of committed, put it into what we call restricted," which means it can be spent. It's not tied to anything. You can spend it however you would like.
So, to take these line by line—and I'll skip the first two to go right to the bottom two, the ride capital request one and two. We were given backup in our packages, listing the individual items that made up those two ride capital requests.
Yep.
Some of those items have been completed. Some are in process. And then some, I guess, are now designated to be not needed.
Because we paid for it out of local.
Because we paid for it out of local. Okay? And so, that—that's where we see the 255,000 for capital request one and two, about 48,000 for capital request two.
That's correct.
Then you have $250,000 each that was voted upon by the school committee in fiscal year '15 and '16. So, it's a total of half a million. And this is funds that were set aside for capital improvements out of the fund balance that has not been spent, nor is there a specific plan to spend it.
That's correct.
So, what we're asking for at this time is to take those four numbers together for a total of 803,700 to take it out of the committed fund balance and put it back to the uncommitted fund balance, if I'm saying that correctly.
You're saying it correctly.
Okay. And that would allow us to have those funds available to use for future improvements.
So, basically, you're reducing the 166,1 by 800,000.
Correct.
That's correct.
Got it.
And the remaining of what's in that— And the remaining of what's in that eight hundred thousand that would remain is accounted for at a line level.
That's correct.
Yes.
The last section is add-back miscellaneous items. There was some various accounting things that had gone on at the end of the year during the audit, and for four hundred and fifty-five thousand, approximately, there were some accounting entries done, and so that got added back as well.
These were items that, under the previous way of reporting federal funds, because most of that four hundred and fifty-five thousand, four ninety, is federal dollars, we put it aside to be used at a later date. And what RIDE said was, you need to bring that into your, under the new reporting protocols, you have to bring that back into your operational funds, and you have to spend it.
Oh, you can't put it aside?
So, that's what held up the audit.
Yeah.
So, you know, for those people that not tied into local politics per se, but there was, the audit was delayed, because we had to account for these dollars. The money was always there, but we had to then assign it to local line items in our budget, which we've done.
Can you expound upon the IDEA?
Yep, IDEA is federal dollars that are used to help offset, and Amy, you can jump in, please, to offset high special education costs that a district has. Mrs. Donnelly Roach handles the federal grants, so I'll let her expound.
So, each year, we budget locally, of course, and address all of the students' needs, and there is a supplemental fund available called the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And we get an allotment from the state each year to address a portion of that, any supplemental things. There's very specific assurances and delineations about how that money can be spent, and it is based on an assumption that the local effort is maintained in a continuous, consistent way, so that you cannot reduce the local budget and put things in the federal budget. You have to maintain the quality of services and supports for students with disabilities, and only use that IDEA money for supplemental, above and beyond, kinds of services.
So, would I be correct in saying that if we're adding this to our fund balance, that it would be considered committed?
I would say that funds that were originally classified as local were reclassified and expensed to the, to the IDEA, and so it was more available money in the local.
So, it was sort of fungible by, by using that money as local funding?
It was really reclassified? It's not, it's not adding federal funds to our local budget, but that's not possible under the accounting rules?
It was the expenses we had in our local funds that we spent our local money on, but we were able to reclassify it to federal, so it became less expense that we incurred.
So, it was basically doing what it's supposed to do, which is an offset to-
Offset of the local expense.
So, it's not tied specifically to the state funding source.
No.
But rather, it is a above and beyond for high-cost special ed needs, typically for out-of-district tuition costs that was being paid for out of local funds. But now, when you are getting that federal funding, and then you free up those local funds, essentially, if I'm-
Yes.
Right, and each year, we apply to use those funds, based on the needs of the students we have, with input from, obviously, our special education leadership team and the teachers, who are the case managers for each of the children with individual disabilities and individual education plans. So, each year, the way we spend or allocate or budget those funds can vary, but we generally have had historically a line for tuitions, as well as lines for things like training for special educators, hardware, classroom materials for specialized instruction. So, again, above and beyond what students would receive. Just being a fourth grader, now you're a fourth grader who happens to have IEP, and that IEP drives the services, and we support those services with some of these funds.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
And then, a long time ago, when I was a special education teacher in the sixties and seventies, this was passed, and it was a huge amount that was supposed to come back. Of course, we know that doesn't happen, it's in the teens probably, but so, just like everything else, the promises, you know, the world is paved with broken promises, you know? So, but I'm glad that we do get this anyway. Most important thing is we give the, these students what they need from us.
Absolutely.
That's the most important.
Okay, so, Ms. Farr?
Last line item, being just a roll-up of all the expenses going in and out, it's three million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one available in the fund balance.
So, okay, so when all is said and done, when we take, sort of what we think is in the fund balance, less what we have already committed, both in prior allocations, as well as the budget, as we're proposing to present to the budget committee later this year, we have about three point three million dollars in the unrestricted, or project restricted fund balance.
That's the projection.
That's our projection.
That is the projection, based on the audit, based on what we've discussed in terms of our budget, where we are. And it is always sobering to remind the committee and myself that we, by the state's estimate, have forty million dollars, not fifteen million dollars worth of work that needs to be done on the middle and high schools. A more reasonable, I don't know if more reasonable is the right word. I think that a kind of back-of-the-envelope impression of the building committee was that we're somewhere between twenty-five and, and maybe higher twenties million dollars of work that really needs to be done ultimately in the scheme.
We have, we have submitted to RIDE a twenty-five million dollars' worth, and we know there's probably more, but, so the, which we're very thankful for from our, the residents, for overwhelmingly to approve this bond. We know there's at least another ten million, probably a little more, that we know, the, the building committee, from all the meetings we've been at, there's at least another ten million, and we've documented it. It's on file, it's online, that we need. So, there's, there's plenty of other items, and I know we'll be considering lights and ceiling tiles tonight, but they're, again, it's always to keep in mind, it's, it's just not fifteen million in repairs, renovations.
And because of the careful and dedicated work of the building committee, including some of the members in the audience tonight, we are eligible for state reimbursement that goes to the town.
Yeah.
Goes to the town, it does not come back to the school. It is not a bailout for the schools. It is perhaps a bailout for the town when we do, when we spend that money.
And I think as well, we see a number of school districts within fifteen miles of us who are contemplating building brand-new facilities.
Right. The cost of which will be two hundred million dollars for us.
Well beyond the types of expenses and improvements that we're hoping for.
And again, what I think, again, not thought of, but to replace two new schools would be around two hundred million.
Yeah, oh.
In today's dollars.
So, anyway, thank you very much, Mrs. Farr, Ms. Farr.
Thank you.
So, I think we can move on, I'd like to-
And just, and I, and I want to move on as well.
Yep.
But at our next meeting, we'll, we'll have this on again.
Yep.
And I'll make sure, I'll email everyone copies, hard copies for-
Thank you.
For Mrs. Black and Mrs. Pavel. But everyone will have one for our next meeting, and we'll talk, we'll speak to it again, because we'll have time to go through it and-
That'll be good, thank you.
And answer more questions.
And would you also be including the projected, take away from the fund balance, if we are to ask the town for level funding next year?
The committee would have to vote on the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Once that's done, we can then give you a hard, hard number.
Okay.
What you have in front of you is a working draft.
Absolutely.
Essentially. But assuming nothing changed, that's what it would look like, the two seventeen, I believe, that you have for a number, is what we're looking at, you know, for one-time capital expenses for this year that we'd have to account for, out of the fund balance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to move up items nine A and B.
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor? So, item nine A, recommendations from the building subcommittee.
For those, obviously, in the public that didn't have the backup memo, the building committee has been meeting every two weeks, gosh, for the last six, eight months. We meet twice a month with the contractors from Alborg, and also Mr. DeQuatro and his folks from RGB Architects. And during our early conversations, when the project was being explained to us in greater detail, we came, it came to our attention that, as part of the scope of work that we paid for the fifteen point, of the fifteen point four million, in the classrooms where the HVAC, the heating units were going to go, the ceiling tiles were only going to be replaced in approximately a third of the ceiling. The project called for the remaining ceiling tiles to stay. So, we asked for, and we started talking, well, what would it cost, because we, just from a practical sense of having the new tiles and the old tiles, and how do you make the, the framing of the tiles work, et cetera? We said, what would it cost us to do the classrooms, to make sure that they were seamless? And then the conversations led to, well, okay, if we're looking at that, what about all the other parts of the building for ceiling tiles? And then we had conversations about lights and replacing all the lighting, since we were going to be taking out the ceiling tiles for the heating and possibly replacing the ceiling tiles, what about the lighting? So, we asked representatives, the representatives from Alborg to provide us estimates, which I provided to you. And the estimates cover to replace all the ceiling tiles in both buildings and the lighting. And one of the things I'd like to point out is that Alborg came to us and said, they would be willing to put the ceiling tiles in at cost. So, as I said in my statement, if we were to pay for that, if we had to pay for that work, it would be close to a quarter of a million dollars, and they're willing to do the ceiling, we pay for the ceiling tiles, they would install them. So, we talked as a, and the representatives from the building committee are here, we talked about this as being a once-in-a-generational opportunity to do the work that's sorely needed. So that, as you can see in here, I think Mr. DeQuatro mentioned that we have multicolored lights up in the ceiling, which, if you try not to look up there, but you can see that the lights are just multicolored, and the ceiling tiles. And we, we got an estimate, we went through the estimates, the building committee was comfortable with the pricing. And if you want a sample for folks that don't know, well, what would the lights look like, the high school, when you walk in the entryway, but if you walk in the offices, you can see the new lighting that are here in the high school office. And we are recommending, because I'm part of the building committee, that the school committee consider authorizing one point four million dollars to, to do the work, to replace the ceiling tiles and the lights at both the high school and the middle school. Does anyone from our committee want to speak?
Could you talk about the rebate?
Oh, yes, on the rebates on the lights. The lights will pay for themselves after four and a half years. They have a twenty-two-year life expectancy. We will save, we go through approximately thirty cases of light bulbs a year for the, the two schools. They cost two hundred dollars each. That will save us six thousand dollars every year. And if you need to replace the ballasts, and I know Mr. Mendez is here, he can explain what ballasts are, but I think they're the, what connects to the lights. We go through thirty of those a year, they cost a hundred and twenty dollars apiece. That costs us about thirty-six hundred. So, just in savings from the lights and the, the ballast, would save about six thousand dollars a year, just to maintain what we have, we would save that. And the savings that we would get from the new lights, they would be paid for after four and a half years, the costs that we would use on the lights. And we'll get to those guys when we get to the grid, folks, when we do the audit. Mr. O'Dell and Mrs. Zimmick are here.
Mr. O'Dell, Mrs. Zimmick?
Good evening.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Perry and-
Oh, here's, so, I think, I think the important consideration to doing this work while Alborg construction is here, there's several, the most important is that while they're here, we realize the savings that if this work was not done over here, we would have to pay to bring the company in to do the work. The compensation is the same if you install the old tile over again or the new tile. It's not costing anything. It's only the cost of the tile. That was, that was a real motivator for us. You're getting a new tile, you're getting a new tile, you're getting lights that are easier, easier, brighter, cleaner. We're going to realize energy savings. In five years, the lights will pay for themselves, and energy savings, and it's, it's a win-win.
Thank you.
The other thing is the ceiling tiles are going to improve the air quality. We're going to put all new heating systems in, and if you keep the old things which keep the cleanness in the air, I mean, the teachers are going to have a better environment, the kids are going to have a better environment. It's basically something that the general public is going to be able to see immediately, which, while the roof definitely needs to be done, and heating system needs to be done, it's something that's obvious. So, this is something that I feel is a key investment for the general public, who, while we're great in performance, but on, they're going to actually see benefit for this firsthand. And if they walk through the schools now and can put down corridors because it's dark, versus what the entryway and even the office of right now, this is amazing, that's amazing.
Exactly what they both just said is that this is something that taxpayers are going to be able to see.
When we put roofs on buildings, they're not going to see that. When we put new oil on the buildings, they're not going to see that. And when we do the tiles and the lights, it's totally, the structural building itself, the outside of the building is in great shape, with a new roof on it, and the boilers in it, it's going to be efficient, and this is only going to make it more efficient. So, I think it's well worth the investment. I think it's a, it came back at forty-seven.
Uh-huh. Cloak, just over four.
So, I think it's kind of, we're here, we're now, let's get it done.
And I, I just, I just want to add, for a number of years, we've been talking about the fund balance as it's a bad, if it's a bad thing. We're always criticized by, not everyone, but a percentage of folks in the community. And we've always said, we're putting it a day, putting the money away for rainy day, for projects that we're going to need someday. Well, here's one that we need, and it's not someday, it's now, and I couldn't agree more with what was said. Now's the time. People will see it, they'll see what we're spending, why we have the money in reserve, and again, as Dr. Larkin mentioned, the town gets thirty-five percent of that back. So, if we're spending one point four million, they're getting at least four hundred thousand plus back in, and, from, from the state. So, we, you know, the kids win, the teachers win, the buildings win, and the residents win, because the money comes on to the town side in the form of the reimbursement revenue.
So, I'm seeing that the, the lighting in itself, just the lighting, is well north of the half a million dollars, so that's your four-year payback there, and I can certainly understand the aesthetic improvement that this whole project will have. My really, my only question is, because this is going to be a major hit to our fund, are there any other projects that you have on your list that we should be considering as just as important as this?
You will be, we're not there yet. We're prepared right now to bring this forward. Our next major proposal, that won't be nearly as expensive as this, but are the bathrooms. We're, we currently received an estimate from Alborg, the estimate's being vetted by RGB, to, because our initial proposal, what we had been discussing at the building committee level, is to at least initially do the boys' and girls' room here in the senior lounge area, and over at the middle school, the bathrooms that are nearest the audit, the gymnasium, which are used on the weekends by the public. Once we get a hard number on that, we'll then bring it, we'll do what we're doing now, we'll bring a recommendation to the committee, saying, here's what it would cost, or an estimated cost. What does the committee want to do? What does the committee want to do? That's our next, that's what's coming up next. We don't know what that number is yet. We got an estimate, but we have to verify it, and it's still too early for us to, to discuss it. But that, that's the next item that we've been kicking around.
And Mrs. Zimmick, your point is very well taken with regard to the air quality. I know that this has been an issue for a long time in, in these buildings. So, it really, to see that we can, I, I know a million and a half is a lot of money, but it's, you know, when you consider the investment you're making here.
There's square footage in the schools.
Most definitely.
And again, I, I just want to reiterate, that's why we have that fund balance. It's for projects like these, it's for the middle school parking lot, it's for the high school parking lot. You know, this is a great example of what that money's for. Before that, it was for the septic system for the three schools that we use that fund balance for.
So, I'll be optimistic and say that actually, if we got all of those things done, we would be, I think, as a district, pretty well set for at least many years, hopefully beyond all of our tenure.
Oh, the, the lights and the ceiling tiles will, yeah, will long beat past people's tenure here.
Yeah.
Again, I call it generational because it is. To replace the lights, the last 22 years is what they're projected. That's a generation. Those ceiling tiles, the money we save, and I didn't even do the man-hours, that it takes approximately 20 minutes to change the lights, and if it's the ballast, it takes anywhere up to an hour. So, you tack that on, we would be saving in man-hours as well. The guys would be able to do other things, our custodians.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
So, when you talk about the fund balance, let's all remember that it started when the town took two years of our fund balance away, and then we had to go all the way up to the Supreme Court to get it back. So, during that time, we couldn't touch anything. It had to stay there, and then they said, give it back because you can't take that away. The other thing was the septic system that Mr. Rierick mentioned. It, it failed, and we were told the three schools could close down if we didn't replace it.
By DEM.
By DEM. And so, we worked with DEM, we had someone testing it all at different time. And then they were told, we were told it would only cost 250, 300, and I got calls saying, no, a lot more than that. So, we kept putting the money away. It was 750 in the end. But that's our money. We could have asked from the town because it was health and safety. Imagine if the three schools closed down. We didn't have to ask. We've never had to ask the town, which is so nice for, for any money. And as far as these lights going, when I saw the number, I said, oh, my goodness. But then we talk about the mold and the different things. It's very important, especially with the children with so many allergies. And when I walked in tonight, I said, wow. This is, I didn't know why, but I said, this is different. These lights are driving me crazy. My eyes are jumping up and down, but, and I thank the building committee and everybody, but I think it's a really good investment, and the town can see, as you said, this is where we put your hard-earned money. We're trying to take care of these schools. And again, I'll say, when I went to that thing on the state level, and they talked about the, all the schools are conditioned, mold was one of the biggest things they mentioned. And then when they showed our boiler, they were writing the presentation, I was like, oh, no. I looked, it was on the last page, too. I kept turning pages, I said, oh, good, we're not on here. And I got, oh, there's the Titanic, it's here. But I was so proud to be able to tell everyone that the townspeople had invested, again, in this town, the three elementary schools, the high school bond, a brand-new library. This town is amazing. During the depression, we did it at Fort Barton School and in the library. We did it again during the toughest times, 2008 on. This town is amazing, and I can't thank them enough. Thank you.
And Dr. Larkin, we do have, I know it's the next item on the agenda nine B, but we do, I believe Mr. Drummond's here from National Grid.
Oh, good.
If you have any questions about the rebates or, the rebates are built into that estimate that you see. But if there's questions about the lights, I know he's here to speak about the audit for the other schools, but.
Meaning the rebates are built in, when you see the estimates.
Yep.
That's what the rebate costs, is that correct, guys? My, okay. There's our Alborg guys. True and true.
That's correct. Basically, we took the price, the original fixture, subtracted the rebates, and then the price that you see there is a combination of the fixture minus rebate plus installation.
Right. Okay.
And again, we were provided two options. Option A is the one we didn't go with. The option A was, they were $200 per unit. We were very comfortable with this option, option B, because we call it B because it was the second option that we looked at. They're the lights, they're the ones in the office, correct?
Correct.
Not the ones in the lobby. Those are the As.
No.
Everything's, everything's B now, the second ones?
Okay, so, at this point, I'd like to put a motion on the table. So, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve $1,405,871 for ceiling tiles and lighting fixtures at the middle school and high school.
I'm that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, any other discussion? Maybe Mr. Drummond could speak to the rebates if he has a moment?
Sure.
So, Jerry Drummond from National Grid, focused on the state agencies, all the municipalities and public schools in the state of Rhode Island, all in for energy efficiency and conservation. So, you can assign your incentive check, we all pay into a fund. If you look at your utility bill, we pay into a ratepayer fund that supports this energy efficiency program. You can assign that incentive to your contractor, or you can take a check in and use that to pay. I would say 95% of the municipalities in the state, assign it to the contractor so you can lower the amount that your purchase order and billing system is. So, from that perspective, I'm probably working with half the districts in the state right now to do exactly what you're doing here, those flat panel LEDs. Your prices drop so significantly, it's a great time to, to, like, the incentive covers 50, 60% of the cost of the actual fixture, then you pay the balance of that plus the labor and the store. We talked about all the maintenance, and the laser bug we had, it's been a long, after we haven't gotten anymore, and mercury in, and there's a whole lot of things that you want to go with LEDs. LEDs, definitely the way to go. So, that's on this project here, so I don't think we have two different votes, one to approve this project, which I would recommend, obviously, in the preliminary numbers. Again, we still need to take applications into the system and get that approved for you. So, the process is that they would submit an application to National Grid, you do have to sign it. You're not signing to commit to do this project, it's a vote that's going to take place here. I will send you a commitment letter that says, if you do this project as designed, this is the incentive National Grid will provide you, and who you want us to pay it to. Second thing I would ask, separate vote, is while we're doing this, I'd like to look at no cost obligation at the rest of your school buildings. We're looking at most of the school buildings in the state to do this and come back to you in a future date with cost savings analysis very similar to this, or your other buildings while we're looking at that. I'd also recommend you look at LED exterior lighting on all of your buildings as part of that second thing. I don't want to hold this up here in the middle of a construction project, you're already starting this, I want to get that vote on the table, the committee make their decision. But also look at it, all of the other districts in the state are looking at exterior. You might as well do it, as you said, these things last 50 to 100,000 hours, which is 22 years.
Yeah, I asked, they gave us hours, and I, so put it in people's terms.
Yeah. Be like he is.
Your town is converting, are you streetlights to LED or some of the town buildings? So, this is what's going on in the state. Any more questions? Okay.
Bill, didn't we just do some of the lights already at the middle school outside?
We did. But this will be, the audit's free, and they would, they would go and look at everything.
Take that up, actually, as a separate motion.
That's, that's nine B, but, and we'll take that up after we get this done.
Okay.
Thanks, Jerry. We'll, they'll vote on this, and then we'll vote on the.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mrs. Black, Mrs. Perry.
All set.
Any members of the public? So, the motion is to approve approximately 1.4 million dollars for this project. All those in favor? All opposed? Okay. I'd like to express my thanks personally as well on behalf of the committee to Mr. O'Dell, Mrs. Zimmick, Mrs. Leback, and Mr. Perry for all of your hard work, which you will continue.
Because he runs the meeting.
Thank you. Yes. All right. So, as a separate item is item nine B, which would be to approve the audit by National Grid of the external lighting and.
Internal at the other three schools.
And the internals, yeah, and the internal lining of the other three schools, and that is of no cost. Mrs. Black will make the motion. Mrs. Perry will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, as I run the meeting.
Back to all business.
Item eight, A, B. Try to review commission update. Mrs. Black. Mrs. Black, do you have any news for us?
No, well, I have plenty of news in the packet, did you see it all?
Yes.
And I just want you to know, this is the working document, so when they're taking votes and discussing everything, I try to capture it, and then it changes, and so, and I don't even go to the ladies' room because I'm not sure what they're going to do. And I stepped out for one minute, and when I came back, they were talking about giving refunds for like school vouchers, and I said, that's the last time, I'm never leaving again. So, anyway.
I, I, I read that. I've read, I actually went through it. My question, it's really more informational.
They call it a rebate.
When, when, because there's a lot of things in there, some get voted out, voted back in, when do they, when would they have something ready?
Well, I don't know, but when it's totally ready, we're going to send it to our attorney, right?
Yes. My understanding is they have to have it done by like May, June.
Okay.
Because it then has to go to the council. I, you know, yeah.
I did ask.
It's just hard, it's just a lot, because stuff comes in, stuff comes out, never mind the validity of it, but.
No, but I did ask the question, a process and procedure, and Masha was there, and I said, no, you go through all this, and then you give it to the council. I said, can the council reject?
Yes.
Everything? And I think they said no.
Of course they can.
I don't think so.
So, anyway, that has to be looked into. That was the question I had.
I believe the council has to approve everything that goes through ballot.
And then it goes to the general.
Right. So, we'll look into that, but when, when at the final stage, and then we'll send it to our attorney so they can, they can vet it for anything that's illegal.
Yeah.
Like 1218 was, it's unconstitutional. That's, don't pay attention to that.
Okay. Thank you for your.
So, I continue to attend, gets over to the women's.
Perseverance and.
Come by.
Get an award for that.
The capacity to not go to the ladies' room.
Give me a little trophy, please.
You'll get, we'll give you a big trophy and.
Just a little one.
Participation trophy.
No.
All right. Item eight C is update on before-school care and approval of a request to survey parents. I believe that's Mrs. Black.
Yes, Mr. Rierick and I had the opportunity to visit East Bay Community Action Programs' before-school program for childcare. It was very informative, and Christina Ruth from East Bay Community Action Program was very generous with her time and expertise, and we walked away with a folder of information and resources that is a good inch thick, realizing ever more how complicated setting up quality childcare with all the state recommendations and requirements is. So, as you can see in my memo, I'd like to request that we send out a survey, and it has been a busy survey time, so I'd like to wait a little bit until the state survey works, window is closed at the three elementary schools, and send out a survey to families about their interest, and then also request your permission to apply for a grant, small grant for startup that, through the Newport County Fund, which is run by the Rhode Island Foundation.
Okay. I make that motion?
Do I second? I'll second it.
I just want to, I just want to thank Mr. Ruth for giving us, spending time with us. They have a wonderful program in Newport, and if we can, if there's an interest and we can duplicate what they have, it'd be quite a program to add to our offering to our parents and kids.
Just point of order, Mrs. Black, was the motion to approve the survey or to approve the application for the grant?
Both.
Both?
Yes, we're looking for both.
Okay, that's convenient. Any other discussion?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank both of you for taking the trip out there and putting this research in. I'm looking at some of these, these draft survey questions, and if I could just make one recommendation. Please. If you could at all possibly simplify it. I think what's important to our parents is that, A, we're looking to gauge interest in the service, and B, we're looking to see if parents are willing to pay a nominal fee for that service, and that's really all we need to know from them. I, I can't imagine that they would have too, too much to say on, you know, what do, some of the questions I see are a little bit more than probably what your average parent are going to care to answer, and I don't want to scare them from answering the survey. So, if we could just be as simple as possible with it.
So, you'd like just what?
Really, two questions?
Right.
Are you interested?
I'm interested.
And would you be willing to pay? Do you have the need, you know?
Yeah.
I know it's not going to be for every single family, but I, I really do feel that there is going to be a need.
Yeah.
And I think that's what the heart of the, the issue is, and certainly, you know, with all, all the respect, understanding that this is not an easy undertaking to start up, and glad you're going for the grant and everything, but, you know, from the consumer point of view, is what, you know, what can you do for me as a parent?
But we also, but I, but I also think it's important, and I agree, we can maybe simplify it, but I think it's also important, since we're surveying parents, what's their expecta, what do they view? Are they looking for just a place to drop their child? Because what they have in Newport is more than that. It's just more than a place than just drop your kid off.
How long does the program run in Newport? In the morning, the morning program?
Seven, eight thirty.
Pardon me. Their before-care program, and I understand other agencies, like the YMCA, who runs before-care programs, and neighboring towns like Middletown, generally start at about seven.
Seven.
And so, families can drop at seven, or seven-thirty, or eight, and any, or even, you know, 10 minutes before school starts, whatever their, rest of their day requires.
In Newport, the parents can pick 90 minutes, or they can pick 15.
Right. Whatever they need.
Whatever works in their schedule, but the program where you visited runs for a particular amount of time.
The program runs for about an hour and 15 minutes.
About an hour and a half.
Yeah.
And does it serve only elementary school parents?
Yes, the model we were looking at, it's just elementary.
Right, so, we know that it's a balancing act, and it is rather complex, more than I, you know, want to belabor tonight, but it is complex. So, the intent of the grant would be to really have interested families take leadership and help develop a program that meets the needs of the families of Tiverton, who don't necessarily know that we want to be just like the program that they have in Middletown or in Newport, and eventually develop a request for proposals perhaps. Again, the committee would drive that decision to see if there might be an agency that would run that program, be able to balance the sliding scale rates that some families might receive with the full pay rates that other families would pay. And that balancing act makes a program pay for itself. So, that's why the, my draft survey has five questions, certainly it can be truncated, and I would want to do that with the input of the three elementary principals in particular so that we know we're asking the right questions. But please, any input?
And we're, and we're focused on just the elementary. It would be K4, pre-K4.
Right, and making it affordable is a key thing, just right.
And I think towns, towns that approach me.
Yeah.
Are not concerned about what it's going to cost. They're concerned that they can drop their child off, but some of them want to drop their child off very early in the morning. Not many, but there are a few.
There's a few, yeah.
Could do a sleepover.
And they're not really, no, they want to drop, there are a few parents that have to be at work at.
For adolescents, 15-year-olds?
Seven o'clock. And they have to travel to Providence or Worcester or, and that's early. I mean, because then you're saying the drop-off needs to be 6:30, and I, at this time, in the community, there aren't many before-school programs. And I don't think there are any, except maybe in-home care, that opens at 6:30 in the morning. So, that's hard. I mean, 6:30 is early.
I just want, the survey is just the first step. I just want, the survey is just the first step, it's.
We just see how much.
To see if there's interest.
Yeah, that's right.
And then we take, and see if we can get funding, because it is, what we, one of the takeaways is, it's something we can't run.
Yeah.
We, they can use our space if we were ever to get that far, but we would have to have someone run it for us.
A third party would be.
A third party would be needed. That, that, that's really the only thing we're sure of.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to sort of move forward with investigating this, I would say. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Item 9C, Monthly Financial Report.
Lisa, you're up.
So the Finance Subcommittee met, and we went over, I guess, a new variation of the monthly financial report. I was asked to be able to look at the data from current year-to-date FY18 versus FY17. So if you notice in the report, it'll show your FY18 column, it'll have your actuals, your budget, your remaining balance, and your percentage spend-through. And then it'll be that way for the previous fiscal year for FY17. And then the third column or batch of information is your variances for FY18 versus 17 for actuals, and then budget, and then percentage change between those as well. You can see that it's in different categories, from compensation to benefits and through your other non-personnel items. And overall, we are spending pretty much on par from this year to last year. 47% spend-through for FY18, and 43% spend-through was FY17.
Okay.
I just want to thank Ms. Bar for putting this together in this format. I do find it very useful.
I like it.
We had a really good conversation about the in-depth line items when the Finance Subcommittee got together, and asked her, posed a number of questions, so I, I think this is going to be a very useful tool for us moving forward.
And we'll have it on once a month.
That's good.
For the committee to review.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 9D, Pro request to seek bids on exterior doors for THS, TMS, and.
Yes, as you know, in the budget, in the proposed budget for next year, I asked to replace the doors at Pecassett, the middle school, and at the high school. The doors that would be replaced would be the front doors at the middle school, the front doors at, both sets of front doors at Pecassett and the high school by the gym area. From talking with the principals and with Mr. Mendes, we're having trouble keeping these doors locked, especially at the, at Pecassett and here at the high school. They don't close, and the only way we can, they close, but they don't always close completely, and it's something that we're monitoring and we're aware of, and I just would like to go out to bid sooner than waiting until the summer to do the work. I'd like to go out to bid now, so we could.
Get it ready.
Get it done maybe within the next month, month and a half, to get the doors installed. We already put it in the budget, and it would come out of the fund balance. I would obviously bring the bid back for approval to do the work, but I need approval to go out to bid.
I make that motion to go out to bid?
Do I second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All, oh, Mr. Perry.
One more question. Those doors that are going to be put in, and I think you, I don't know if you've talked about this, but are they going to be bulletproof?
No, they won't be bulletproof glass. No.
Okay. I had a conversation with the fire marshal, and he mentioned something, and I didn't even know this was on the agenda tonight, but he mentioned something about bulletproof doors in schools now. You might want to check.
I'll check, I'm not aware of it, but we'll, we'll check before we go to bid.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Thanks. All those in, any other discussion, comments? All those in favor for going out to bid? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9E, Request to Accept Recess Rocks in Rhode Island Grant.
Yes, Barton received the recipient of $7,500 recess rocks grant, just looking for approval to accept.
Make that motion, congratulations. I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
We would not want to rock.
All right. Item 9F, Request to Accept Tiverton Patch Grant.
Yes, you have, it's for $13,000. Mrs. Donnelly Roche, Mr. Ashley, and Mrs. Polish toured. If you go on the Tiverton Patch, you'll see a nice picture of Mrs. Donnelly Roche in her hard hat. And it's, yeah, I just wanted, and matter of fact, it's right here. If you turn the page, it's right in the packet.
It's right in the packet.
It's, it's a good photo. Looking for permission to accept the grant.
Permission to accept the grant and say thank you, because they've been doing this since 2009.
Yes, they've been doing it for not long.
When Mr. Fazette was here.
They're a great partner.
They've been amazing partners in the community. We had a tour also, but they didn't give me a hard hat. Maybe they thought my hair would protect me.
Maybe.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor accepting the grant? Okay. Item 9G, Professional Development Day Update.
Amy, you're up.
Thank you. I have in front of me a list of the various topics that'll be addressed on this Friday's Professional Development Day for our teachers. It is set up as a conference style, so teachers can make a personalized schedule to best address their input. And I want to thank the Professional Development Committee members, and if I can just take a moment to briefly thank each of the individual colleagues who are presenting on Friday. So briefly, I want to thank Ms. Antunes, Ms. Cusmano, Mr. Dubois, Ms. Delcourt, Ms. Larson, Ms. Moore, Ms. Simmons, and Officer Black, who are all presenting to their colleagues on Friday. We're really working hard as a committee to honor all the expertise that we have within the district and make sure people have the opportunity to share their successes. So it should be a great day.
Great.
That's a good question.
Yeah, of course.
It's a conference-style workshops, so have teachers already chosen the workshops in.
They sign up online.
Yep.
Yes, they do sign up online.
All right.
The, I just want to call to attention, it's, it's a great menu for our teachers, but of note is the Alice Smock Trial Intruder Training. That's, we have over 100 teachers signed up for two sessions, one here at the high school, one at Fort Barton, and we are, working in conjunction with Officer Black and the Police Department, where they will be firing blanks, and we'll be going through our protocols so people will understand what it sounds like if that incident were to occur, and how we respond and how we can be better at it. So it's, it's something that we've been working on for at least a year, and I'm pleased that it's coming to fruition, working with Captain Jones and Lieutenant Costa, Lieutenant Raymond, and Officer Black.
So how many teachers did you say were signed up for that?
We have 130 total. Was it 90 and, 120, 90 and?
Yeah, I don't have 100, but about 120 who have opted into one of those sessions.
We didn't make it mandatory, because we didn't want to force people to.
Yeah.
To go through it, but we have 120 out of 181 teachers.
That's very good.
That's great.
Signed up to volunteer.
So that's a very compelling program. I went to one presentation on it, and I, you know.
Is Mrs. Delcourt involved in that?
Okay, great, thank you. Item 9H.
Yes, Mr. Ashley is the, he couldn't make it this evening, requesting approval for a half-day on the 23rd, so our seniors can do their senior project presentations.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
And again, if anyone's interested and wants to serve as a judge, contact Lee McCarthy, her email is in the memo, if you folks would like to serve as a judge. If you haven't done it, it's a great, great experience.
Yeah.
To do them.
And item 9I, Homeschool Request.
Just requesting, we have two homeschool requests, seeking approval.
Motion to approve the homeschool, two homeschool requests.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, any announcements?
Yes, this Sunday, from 2 to 4, at the Town Hall, the Tiverton Art, the Tiverton Arts Council has a display, art showcase, where our students from Fort Barton, their artwork will be part of that display.
Okay.
And I believe next Thursday, Dr. Dice Mitchell at the middle school?
Patriots.
Yes, it's our annual night museum, our Patriot Project Night, and I, please, I put that in my recent invites.
Good point.
And I'll send out another reminder. A lot of time, 6:30 to 7:30, you will get a first-person perspective from.
We have negotiations.
Now, and also more sure.
Always in part.
Of the American Revolution.
I thoroughly enjoyed that last year.
It's always a good time. And don't forget to press the button, otherwise the students don't talk. They'll just stare at you. You have another item on the agenda.
I thought so.
9J, Superintendent Sir.
Updated agendas on the screen.
Was it updated on the state website?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Must have been after Friday.
Should be, yes. No, it did, it got put up, because you called me and we put it up.
Oh, I didn't call you.
No, I did.
I did.
I must have worked Friday and not Saturday, because we have those new rules.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we, we had it in under the.
Or not weekends, or we'll be in trouble with the Attorney General.
No, you can't.
We're not going to jail twice. We're going once.
You've been once?
We're going to go once.
What for? What was the charge?
The budget, you know the budget.
Oh, I haven't been in your youth. Maybe you're not.
Let's try to ask.
All right, let's just, you're running a meeting. She's.
I don't know if I have the hands and.
All right, let the record reflect that I have not been at all.
Well, you could have worked in the White House, then.
Well, I didn't think I could have worked at the White House.
Well, you could have asked at that.
So item 9J is, Dr. O'Rourke is in the process of working through the advertisements and the postings and the community groups. There are some costs associated with the advertisement, about $600 to put it in the superintendent's association and some other things, and he said that we would probably run a couple thousand dollars over the course of the consultancy. So I was going to ask the committee to approve $3,000, expecting that to be more than we will need to fund the consultancy issues.
So that wasn't included in what we gave.
There was not, so that was his fee, so he has his fees and his reimbursement rates, but this is for things like advertisements and any other things.
And approximately $3,000.
He believes it will be much less than that, but that's what I was going to ask the committee.
Will we get the change?
Will we get the change? Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, these, these are, this is money that we allocate and that we then spend. It is not money that we give him and say.
Oh, okay.
Keep the change.
Oh, he submits a bill.
And then if we don't, and if he doesn't go up to it.
He submits an invoice, we pay it.
Yeah, I don't know, this is just money that we need to allocate.
This is just to give us permission to pay any invoice that comes through.
So this is periodical?